Victoria, I know someone who can get you a job when you want to be a teacher. Another outstanding student, his name is Louis Biondo. Louis is an 11-year-old fifth grader student at the Center School and he is the son of Lou Biondo and Athena Testa. Louis enjoys reading. Outside of school, Louis plays basketball and football. This year, he played on the Center School Boys Basketball Team and he is also a leadership captain on the fifth grade school council. Louis is looking forward to moving on to the Higgins School next year. Didn't you like the Center School, Louis?[46.57][46.57](laughter) Last Friday, Louis and Victoria, along with their fellow Center School leadership captains, delivered 223 pounds of food donations to Citizens in Haven from Hunger as part of a school council community service project. That is a wonderful accomplishment. Congratulations.[64.82][64.82](applause) Join us later. And now, we will ask our outstanding students, along with Mr. Olimpio, to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
(inaudible). And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you, everybody.[93.11][93.11](applause)
Job, guys.
I'd also like to introduce Jackie Ofanos, who is the principal of the Center School. Thank you for being here with your students.
Onto approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes of May 22nd, 2018, public hearing on the FY19 school department budget.
Motion, second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 I'd like to make a motion to approve the May 22nd, 2018, regular school committee meeting minutes. Second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Approval of bills.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant A, number 3836, dated June 12th, 2018, in the amount of $126,018.35, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant B, number 3837, dated June 12th, 2018, in the amount of $1,621,330.73, subject to audit.
Second.
Roll call vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Continued business, Ms. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just wanted to let everyone know that next Thursday, June 21st, at 3:45, we will have our regular monthly school building committee meeting regarding the Higgins Project. At this point, a lot of things are being really in the wrapping up stage and we're preparing for a closeout, which will occur probably the end of the summer. So, the ongoing discussion will always be about landscaping and checking on the punch list to make sure that all the items that we need to have 100% are there. There'll be decisions made. Sometimes, some of the punch list items are small and they're something that we would take care of. For example, as I was told, one of the examples would be a faceplate on a switch. That might be easier for us to fix than to have to wait for someone else to do it. So, we'll make all kinds of decisions line by line and that's ongoing. And again, it's open to the public, but I will say, the time may change. We're working on a little bit of a time crunch. So, I'll definitely have it posted and everybody is welcome.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Dunn, for that report.
Mr. Chair, I did want to say that the outside front, where the great big sign is, the electronic sign, we had been told that it would look like a wonderful wild field. And you know what? It's starting to look that way.
It is.
So, it's starting to fill in just a little bit and looking a lot better than it did last year.
I think of amber waves of grain as I drive by now.
Yeah.[311.52][311.52](laughter)
As I bite my tongue. But it is, I have to admit, it is starting to look better. We shall see.
We shall see.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. We're going to actually skip number two for now. We're going to revisit that at the end of the meeting. Let's see.
Number three, school start times. Mr. Hockman.
Thank you, Mr. Olimpio. And there is a written communication from the Federation, I think under the superintendent's report, if I can take them both up at the same time.
Sure.
So, first, I'd like to thank Bruce Nelson and the Federation for participating in a survey dealing with school start times, a subject that we've started talking about. And the results of the survey were quite interesting, I thought. There was a large percentage of teachers that responded to the survey who seemed to be either in favor or not opposed to school start times. So, I just wanted to acknowledge their participation in the process as it's occurring and thank them for doing that. And I just wanted to maybe see where things stand. So, maybe through the chair, to Ms. Carpenter or Dr. Levine, can you just provide some sort of update with regard to what's next for us?
Ms. Carpenter.
Through the chair, to Mr. Hockman. Honestly, I thought maybe the next step would be to visit the survey questions that we received from the woman who did the presentation and prepare those for September. Maybe we could have them on the next school committee agenda and we could sort through them, create our own from that list, prepare them for the September start time. I think that would probably be the best route to go. The survey for the parents and the students.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. I think that's a phenomenal idea and as long as we're going to keep this moving forward and work slowly at it, like we've all talked about.
Yep.
And give everybody an opportunity to digest some stuff. We have a lot of work ahead of us, too, in terms of some of the concerns that were raised by the opponents in the survey from the Federation. And I'm sure we're going to find opponents from parents and students and other community members. So, more information we can gather, the better. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Thank you, Ms. Carpenter. Public participation? Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak? With that said, we're going to turn it over to Dr. Levine, the superintendent's report.
Here's where it gets exciting, everybody. You know that we have been going through the New England Association of Schools and Colleges process to be accredited. We've been at it for about a year. We still have a year to go. They will be visiting us in the fall of 2019. As part of the, there are many things going on at the high school right now as part of this process and we thank all of the teachers and the administrators who have worked so hard up to this point to get us off on a really good footing. One of the things that NEASK asks us to do is to use a survey that Endicott developed that determines kind of where we are regarding opinions of various groups. That includes students, parents, and teachers. We had very high participation from all interest groups and we had very high participation from our teachers. I want to put this as clearly as I can, but I do want to say that Dr. Charette, Charlie Charette, who has worked for us for a number of years now, at my request, put together an executive summary, which is in your folder. The executive summary is something that Dr. Charette is best suited to answer questions from, if you have any, and he is here tonight at my request. I wanted to tell you that the survey questions that you have that are attached to this executive summary suggests that the scores are outside of the norm, that the scores are outside of the aggregate norm from the many school systems that have used this survey. So, there's an aggregate norm scoring each question. And then, we take the survey and we look at what the aggregate norm is. And any scores that are outside of that norm, positively or negatively, that's what you're seeing in your report. Everything else is within the norm. With that, I would simply ask you if you have any questions for Dr. Charette or myself regarding this survey. I also want to caution that this survey was done relatively early in the year. Many, many things have taken place since this survey and even before this survey to mitigate and to address some of the concerns that were brought up in the survey. There are a number of committees that have been working. There are a number of people that have been working together to address these specific questions, to try to change attitudes and do a better job at communication. So, with that, I'll-
The survey itself is focused around the seven standards of the NEASK accreditation process and within those seven standards are 51 indicators. In terms of the survey itself and the work that I've done on it, there are basically 185 possible responses from either parents, students, or faculty that are contained in the survey data. Of those, just so you understand that it's not, the focus of this is focusing on where I was analyzing it and trying to figure out what are the areas of concern. But I want to make sure that the school committee understands that of the 185 possible responses, 124 of them really fell in the category of making progress toward the standard. So, a much smaller number out of 185 really represent areas where we wanted to investigate a little bit further, try to figure out really how does it really fit in with the aggregate schools that have taken this survey and that sort of thing. So, it's a work in progress and it's only a snapshot of the high school at one period of time. And as Dr. Levine said, there's been lots and lots of work that has been accomplished this year, particularly around core values and beliefs and vision of the graduate. And I'm sure the school committee will be getting more information about that, probably pretty shortly, because the high school now is pretty much wrapping up the work on that area.
Yeah, we're thinking that you'll get that at the next meeting. I think I'm going to try to get that information to you before we break for the summer.
Ms. Dunn.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Through you two, Charlie or Dr. Levine, this report, is this for self-examination for our district use or will that be submitted with any of the NEASK projects?
It becomes a data point when the NEASK visiting committee comes, but it's much, much more useful to our team that's currently working, getting ready for the visit.
Mm-hmm.
And then, the self-evaluation, when September or August or one of you folks start school next year, those committees that represent each one of the 70 areas, the seven standards, will be working on presenting a report that will be then made available to NEASK and they'll be using this as data for that.
Good. Okay. My next question, if I may, is will we do another survey next year to see how people respond to the changes that this survey may drive?
So, my strong recommendation is that we do another survey to see if any of the data points that we have now change.
Right. Because that would be, for me, to be honest, I appreciate this. This is wonderful because it's giving people guidelines on what to work for, for the NEASK approval. But honestly, I think for our own purposes, that this is very useful and very necessary so that we can take care of what needs to be done at the high school and be able to, you know, talk to all the stakeholders, find out if they're seeing, you know, improvement in these areas where they had some concerns, aside from NEASK. This is great for the NEASK project, but for our own uses, I think it's wonderful. And I would like to see a follow-up so that we would be able to compare and also if something needs a lot of attention, that we need to give it the proper attention right away. When, one other question, when is the NEASK visit? Do we know that?
I think in the fall of 2019.
Oh, okay. So, we've got a whole year to get this. Okay. Very good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dunn. Any other questions for Dr.? No?
Thank you, Dr. Charette, and thank you for all the work that you've done.
Thank you.
Yeah.[901.75][901.75](laughter)
Thank you very much, folks. Good to see you again.
Hi, John.
Thank you.
I wanted to talk to you just a little bit about next year's special education programs. We are highly subscribed in our programs and expect to have to add four teachers over the summer, four special ed teachers. It's not unusual for us to add four teachers over the summer. It's unusual for us to add four special education teachers. So, there's good news that goes along with that, and that is that we're keeping more kids in the district. So, four teachers might cost us $280,000. Each kid, if they went out, would cost us over $100,000. So, we're probably saving in the long run between $300,000 and $400,000 just this year on keeping these kids in district. And of course, our goal is to keep the kids in district, not just because of money, but because it's, we feel, better education for the kids to be around the people that they're usually around, and that is locally. So, we're very pleased with that, but I did want you to know that we will be adding four teachers in special ed over the summer. We do have two places where we have found that we can pay for at least some of that cost. We do have some accounts that can be used to pay for these teachers that won't cost the district money out of the regular funds, but we will have to pay for two. So, it'll be two and two, and that's okay. The second thing I wanted you to know about special ed is that we have now developed and we have a pretty firm grasp on what programs will be where next year. I know that's always an interest to parents. The Brown School will still be a major category school for special education programs at all levels, K through five. We do expect that we will have at least two programs, two classes, at the West for next year. We have identified classroom space and we feel very comfortable that that will work out well. The other item that you will be seeing from us on the 26th, is it the 26th that is the last meeting, I think?
Yes.
Excuse me. Will be a restructuring of the high school program. To, in order for us to move from category three to category two, we need to spend some money and restructure the high school special education program. Our regular ed kids are already in the category two category. Our ELL kids have moved very close to it. But our special education program has not. It needs some help. It needs some support. And we will be making a proposal to you on the school committee for restructuring with a new job description, some new responsibilities, and a cost proposal that will probably be in the, after all is said and done, in the $30,000 to $40,000 range. We think the time has come, as Albert Einstein once said, "To do the same thing over and over again and expect a different result is the very definition of being nuts." So, we have to pay close attention. We have to do some things differently. We feel, Ms. Murtagh, myself, and Ruth Grooby have met a number of times on this issue. We now feel that we have a plan ready to be proposed to the school committee. It will be in your next packet. We have received a $700 donation from the class of 1946 to the Democracy in Action curriculum, our civics curriculum, so I would ask you to accept that with gratitude.
Motion to accept with gratitude.
Second.
All in favor?
Okay, thank you. And we have a waiver request from Ward Two Counselor Pete McGinn. I am recommending that you vote on that positively.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second. That's okay.[1171.58][1171.58](laughter)
On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Thank you. This is a waiver that comes to us routinely and it's worthy of waiving. We aren't going to be able to waive the energy fee. Yes, we're not permitted to do that. But we're going to waive a custodian and a facility fee. And I don't really mind the facility fee because it's Welch School kids who are going to benefit from participating in a Fourth of July activity, talk about our civics curriculum. I do worry about the custodian fee. And I don't know, I don't, I'd just like to, at some point, whether it's through the, I don't know if we're still collectively bargaining with that unit or not, maybe the next contract if we've completed the negotiation with them. But I understand it makes sense for a custodian to be present in a building every time it's open, except when a city counselor or a chief of police or some other high-level figure within the city is making the request or is present at the event. The facility that Councilor McGinn is looking to use is essentially the restrooms. There's not going to be any food that's cooked in the school. There's not going to be any use of any classrooms. There's no safety concerns. There's no kids in the building. It's July. There won't be kids in the building for two more months. And $240, in our scheme of things, isn't a lot of money, but it's $240 and another $240 and another $240. And it just seems that it's maybe a fix that we could negotiate. So, I said my two cents.
Ms. Dunn.
I'll share a story. I can remember one evening that the Welch PTO had movie night and everyone was very excited about it. And that evening, we had a floating custodian in the building. We didn't know that at the time. And unfortunately, two of the children who had the flu came to the movie with their parents. They also proceeded to eat approximately 10 pounds of Swedish fish apiece.[1321.01][1321.01](laughter) The movie started, I don't need to go into any detail, but there was a lot of slipping and sliding because after those two let go, everybody else did and I had to leave the room myself. Went to find the custodian. That poor gentleman, I have never seen him again. I'm wondering if he quit that night.[1339.91][1339.91](laughter) Because one of the benefits of us having our custodians in the building when people are using them is the custodians know where the equipment is. The poor gentleman that evening had to find all kinds of equipment that potentially you could need for any type of an event like this. Even if someone is merely using the bathrooms, there could be a problem. And a custodian would know generally where the equipment is to clean up any type of a mess like that, who to contact in case of an emergency. Our city councilors honestly would not know. And I just think that out of respect for the work that the custodians are responsible for, it really and truly does make sense to have that person at the building to take care of any issues. Normally, there wouldn't be any issues. But if it were a rainy day and people did need to come in and use the building, they might decide to use the cafeteria. They may not be aware of the fact that because the cafeteria is a federally funded facility, that there are very specific rules about, we learned this at Parent Advisory Board, use of the refrigerator, use of the sink. There's a lot of different reasons why we have these in place and I honestly do think that, I know it's a bit of a burden on us, but I think it's a good partnership between us and the city to let them utilize our building. I'll be voting in favor of the waiver of fees and I think it's just a prudent thing to have a custodian there.
Any other comments? Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Mrs. Carpenter?
Thank you. Through the chair, Mrs. Dunn, thank you for the story, kind of, maybe a little bit.[1451.22][1451.22](laughter) I do agree with you and currently, the contracts and the rules state that we have to have a principal or a custodian in the buildings. In addition to that, we need somebody who has keys to the building. So, but I just wanted to point out that we no longer negotiate that contract for the custodians. So, if anywhere in that request was headed to the Finance Committee, I can't help you out, Mr. Hockman. That's it.
Thank you, Mrs. Carpenter, and I apologize for being late. I was at the PB High School. They had the fifth grade concert and my daughter had a, played a part in that and I wanted to be there to see it. So, thank you, Mr. Olimpio, for sitting in. Any other comments, Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair of the committee, I think last year, we also waived the $50 energy fee. The Welch School, as we all know, is a very special and kind school to us. And Pete McGinn, City Councilman Pete McGinn, works so hard. His area is downtown and you can walk down there, drive by, and you'll see him. He's always around. He does so much for that community. Does so much for the Welch School. So, I'd like to make a motion to waive that energy fee. If it can't be done, I would go ahead and pay for it myself if I could, or if anyone else would want to chip in, we can do that and waive that fee together, off the budget.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. Mrs. Dunn?
Just a point of information, when we implemented that energy fee, we actually made it one that we couldn't waive, just so you know.
Then, I would go ahead and pay for it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miko. So, we have a motion on the table? Motion by Mrs. Carpenter, who is seconded by?
Mr. Miko, still on the motion? Sorry, Mr. Hockman?
Yeah, no, thank you. Just to respond, I, we all value the work custodians do and I value each and every staff member that we have in the district. And I think that Ms. Dunn's right. The cooperation between the city and the school department is something that benefits everybody. It just, and I appreciate the value of the custodian being there and what they do. I don't know. It seems hard-pressed if Mayor Bettencourt was at the Burke School and he couldn't go into a school building because Ms. Beckett or her, the custodians that work under her, wasn't there. There's a man whose integrity is impeccable and is charged with God knows how many millions of dollars in municipal funds and buildings, but we have a contract that says Mr. Bettencourt isn't permitted to enter that school without a custodian.
Well, Mr. Hockman, thank you for that, those kind words. Mrs. Dunn?
With all due respect, you wouldn't know where the extra toilet paper was, so at that moment, you'd be useless. I'm sorry.[1638.22][1638.22](laughter) Dragging you back to earth.[1640.41][1640.41](laughter)
I should have stayed at that conference.
I was just thinking that.[1646.72][1646.72](laughter)
Move the motion.
So, we have a motion on the table. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Thank you. I would ask the school committee to approve the field trip for the track team to Greensboro, North Carolina, June 14th and 15th.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Carpenter for approval, seconded by Mr. Onotis. On the motion, Mr. Hockman?
Quickly, yeah. Just, I'm going to abstain from this, as I do all field trips, but I did want to give them a little shout-out. They're selling raffle tickets. I think they're three for $5 and the grand prize is tickets to a Red Sox game. I think the second prize is a preseason Patriots game. Jennifer Brennan is, I think, leading that charge. So, if you're interested in getting into a raffle and helping them out, I know that they're actively fundraising.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Miko? Yes.
Mr. Olimpio? Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Hockman? Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. I would ask the school committee to support the Health Centers' field trip to Indianapolis, Indiana, and to refresh your memory. These are, this is a leadership conference. We supported it last year. It's more their trip than ours, but it's our kids and we do contribute money to it. So, I do think that the school committee needs to approve this. These are graduating seniors who will be going away to learn leadership skills and you heard from those seniors last year, when they came back and the enormously successful trip that they have. So, I would ask the school committee to approve this trip.
Motion to follow the recommendation of the superintendent.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Onotis. Roll call vote, please.
Yes.
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 Abstain. Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Just a notification that the National Assessment of Educational Progress has chosen the Higgins and the Carroll School to be included in next year's testing. And of course, that's- and the Carroll School to be included in next year's testing, and of course, that's kind of usually called the nation's report card, that's the national test. And Pamela Sidori made me aware that two of our students were on the cover of the Association of Mass Educators of Students with Visual impairment magazine, and you got a copy of that in the packet, and we're very proud of that.
On that motion, or on that topic, Mrs. Dunn?
This evening, we had the pleasure of meeting those students. They were here prior to this meeting, and really, very nice to speak with them. It's quite an honor to have them on that brochure.
Mr. Mayor, just two more things.
Sure.
I wanted to bring to the attention of the entire community some of the outstanding accomplishments of our athletic program this spring. Our field hockey team won the Northeast Conference Team Sportsmanship Award. I think I'm prouder of that than any other award that we could receive. That is a tremendous accomplishment. Mallory LeBlanc was an NEC All-Conference Salem Evening News Athletic, all scholastic in field hockey. Sofia Rodriguez, the same, and Monica Carrera, the same. In golf, Jack Hamel was an NEC All-Star. In cross-country, the NEC, we are the NEC North Champions, NEC Meet Champions. Fernando Braz is NEC Coach of the Year. Claudio Roca is the NEC Most Outstanding Runner. William Aylwood, NEC All-Conference All-Star, All-Scholastic. Shane Braz, NEC All-Conference Salem Evening News, All-Scholastic. Mark Alpern, NEC All-Conference Salem Evening News, All-Scholastic. Jacob Fahat, NEC All-Star. Ryan Buchanan, NEC All-Star. Noah Christopher, NEC All-Star. In cross-country, Lillian Brennan is an NEC All-Star, Salem News, All-Scholastic. Sarah Ennis, NEC All-Star, Salem News, All-Scholastic. And in boys soccer, Chris Beliveau, NEC All-Conference Salem Evening News, All-Scholastic. Jasep Casalis, NEC All-Star. Troy Capos, NEC All-Star. And Jonathan Els, Salem Evening News, All-Scholastic. I just wanted to congratulate all of the coaches, the kids, and their families for an outstanding season and outstanding accomplishment. I have one last thing, Mr. Mayor. So, to the best of my determination, testing, standardized testing, MCAS, costs us in Massachusetts about $35 million a year. I am going to write a letter to the governor and copy it to all of our senators and representatives and others, including the minority leader and the majority leader of both houses, to ask for a four-year moratorium on testing. Four more, a four-year moratorium would give us $140 million. For $140 million, every school, every school system in Massachusetts could hire a mental health professional and a drug intervention counselor, full cost on the state. So, for four years, we have a moratorium on testing. I'm not saying get rid of it, just a four-year moratorium, and it would make sense, because after four years, we reinstitute the testing and see whether or not there was any slippage. So, I'm going to ask the school committee to co-sign my letter, I'll have it for you on the 26th, to the governor, asking for a four-year moratorium on tests, standardized testing, and to use all of the money gained from that four-year moratorium to hire for this, over a four-year period, a mental health professional and a drug intervention counselor for every school system in the state of Massachusetts. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Levine, and thank you for your report. We will, we go to written communications. We do have a couple of communications today from the PFT. First one is regarding the first book program, and the second, the start time survey. Those will be received. Subcommittee reports, education, Mr. Hockman, anything to report?
Yes, just briefly, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I happened to be at the high school last week, and we just received a $700, or we just received information about a $700 donation from the class of 1946 that's going directly to the civics program that we approved, and Mr. McHugh is going to run, beginning in the 1819 school year, and I couldn't tell you how ecstatic Mr. McHugh was. The $700 is significant, it's a lot of money, but for a graduate of 1946 to think about the students at PBD Veterans Memorial High School in 2018 is really mind-blowing if you think about it, and this was money that could have been used for anything that the class of 1946 wanted to use it for. It was unencumbered money, and they chose to invest in our program and our students, and that deserves a lot of recognition. And if we can add a little something to the typical thank you letter that we do send out, because I think it's quite remarkable for the class of 46 to think of us that way. The only other thing I'd like to add tonight is, I believe Ms. Murtagh has been in conversations with Mr. Workman and Mr. Bucy regarding curriculum revolving around genocide, so I want to thank her for that, and we'll pick that up again, unless you have something to add.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. We are working with Mr. Workman, and we are hopefully going to send some of our teachers here from the middle school over to the Collins Middle School in Salem to see it in action. So, that's where we're at right now. So, thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Hockman. Finance Subcommittee, Mrs. Coppender?
Thank you. I just wanted to back up a little bit with the letter about the book, the first book account. Are we sending that money over as requested?
We will, sure.
Before the end of the fiscal year? The letter just said that they hadn't had it deposited yet.
Yeah, I will double-check on that tomorrow and make sure that that happens.
Okay, thank you. And then in regards to my finance Subcommittee, we're in active negotiations with all units right now. Thank you.
Thank you. School safety, Mr. Olympio?
Yes, I'd like to be scheduled in a meeting for June 26th, right before our regularly scheduled school committee meeting, say six o'clock.
We'll have Chief Griffin and Tim Healy, and then the gentleman from, from COPS Inc., that would be the three.
I'll have Myrdge post that.
Terrific. Thank you, Mr. Olympio. Athletics and wellness, Mrs. Coppender?
Nothing to report at this time, but through the chair, Mrs. Dunn, I want to apologize. I told you I was going to schedule a meeting, a joint meeting with your Subcommittee to go over that wellness policy, and I didn't do it. I think my time might be fraying up a little bit. Did you happen to have a chance to look over that wellness policy at all?
I did, so I have a couple of things that I figured we would end up discussing.
Okay. I think I'll be able to get a date to you by the end of this week. I should have some time freed up, and then we can set something up.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City Council and Advisory Boards, Mrs. Dunn?
Let me see, we have a parent advisory board meeting, which will, is tentatively for June 25th. I'm sending out an email just to see if parents might be involved. It's the last, last night of school, so we may put it on for the 18th, and it would be a wrap-up meeting to finish up this year and prepare for next year. Some of the PTOs have their elections in the spring, so there'll be some new parent advisory board members. And with the city council, they're still looking to have a joint meeting with the liaison. They wanted to discuss a couple of things, and actually, we've put it off until after all the budgets are done.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. Building and grounds, Mr. Miko?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Through the chair of the committee, Center School, I got some word from neighborhood kids that the Center School hoops have been taken down, and they're in the process of putting in new hoops out back, and I believe the city will have to come down, and Ms. Raffanos will have more information for the contact person on that. Thank you.
And next year, we'll buy a basketball.
I'll donate the basketball, just put the hoops up. Those kids are tough in the neighborhood. Tough critics.
We have, the Brown School and also the South School will be getting another basketball net as well. That will be Brown School first and going over to the South. I mean, excuse me, the Center School first and going over to the South. Special Education Parent Advisory Board, Mr. Olympio?
We had a meeting on May 24th, Mr. Miko and I met with some parents, and really, the meeting consisted a lot of clarification on budget issues and things that were circulating around at that time, and I think everybody was pretty satisfied with that response.
Great. Okay, we're going to entertain a motion to go into recess, go into executive session?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, before you do that, I just wanted to mention that the mayor's concept of bringing together the fifth grade from across the city happened again this year for the second time. It was outstanding. We had an outstanding day, the kids had a great time, all the different colors on the field and the different competitions. I wanted to thank everybody who made this happen, especially Molly and Maria, and if you don't know who they are, you should. They are the Bobzy Twins, who do an awful lot for our school system, and once again, they, along with Ms. Murtagh, put together an outstanding program. Thank Mary Bellevance from the mayor's office, and thank the mayor, really, for his vision as to what this could be for kids. Every now and again, kids have to just be kids, and they are in this event, and they just have a good time. That's great. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dr. Levine, and I did want to thank so many people, Molly Foster, Maria Caruso, but both you and Kara for your assistance, Eric Buckley, Bobby Buah. We had dozens of volunteers, high school students, high school student athletes that assisted with us, teachers, so many, and made a successful day. It was wonderful. We had wonderful weather, but it was the third Olympiad that we had, the third year. It was something that I enjoyed when I was in elementary school, and I always thought if I had that opportunity as mayor to bring that back, I wanted to do so, but it was wonderful. Each school represented themselves with dignity, there was sportsmanship, team spirit all over the place, it was great to see, and all the different school colors, and, you know, wonderful, wonderful day for so many. So, and I agree, kids just need to be kids sometimes, and today was that opportunity. And also, a lot of kids made new friends, they're all going to be going into Higgins next year, ought to be together as one, and so it was a great opportunity for kids to get to know each other in that way as well, so thank you for that, for that comment. All right, so, Mrs. Dunn?
One new item. We attended the Science Fair last week, which was outstanding as always. The ceremony was great, and the whole process is wonderful. And what I'd like to do is, I'd like to make a motion that the school committee nominate, through the Mass Association of School Committees Awards Center, that we nominate the PBD Municipal Light Board and the PBD Municipal Light Plant as outstanding school partners. They have been doing this now for 30, 34, 34 years, and it isn't just the Science Fair that they work with us on, they do the Science Fair, and we benefit by seeing the great ceremony, but before that, there's a lot of work. Everyone in there, everyone in their building comes out, the engineers, everybody comes to judge the projects, and they talk with all the students, and then, of course, they provide a wonderful ceremony and great awards to the students, but they also, they highlight our performing arts students when they do the senior citizen luncheon and concert, and they've also been good partners in helping with, you know, if we need a light pole fixed, or, you know, they're there, they're there to help us. So, again, I'd like to make a motion to nominate the PBD Municipal Light Board and the PBD Municipal Light Plant as outstanding school partners.
Second.
Heard the motion by Mrs. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. Thank you, Mrs. Dunn. All in favor?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, that was a good motion, Mrs. Dunn. So, we'll go into recess, into executive session, with the intention to come back and make a report. Okay? Thank you.
So, I'll make a motion to that effect.
Motion made by Mr. Dunn, seconded by Mr. Amico. All in favor?
Yes.
We did, we recessed briefly to go into executive session for a discussion. Wanted to give a quick report on that before we break from the regular school committee meeting. I wanted to state that at the school, at the city council meeting last Thursday night, there was a couple of proposals made by, by me as mayor, had discussion with the city council to reduce a couple of city line items that totaled $425,000. That money was voted unanimously by the school committee to be provided and shifted over to the school budget, $425,000. There's ongoing work, it being a fluid budget, there's ongoing work taking place to move forward with a couple of, a couple of investments into the budget this year. The first is that we will be providing and restoring those two professional development days, and also, we will be shifting significant money into the supply items for the school budget for this coming year. We will be meeting with Unit A, Teachers Unit, tomorrow night to continue discussions on a contract. We look forward to that, those discussions, and we believe real progress will be made at that time on those unit. Again, though, I wanted to state that those with that additional funds provided by the city council in their vote, and with work going on to a very fluid budget, we will be restoring those two professional development days, as well as putting forth significant money to the supply items. And that's the report I wanted to make. With that, motion to adjourn? All in favor?